Good evening and welcome. The Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District is now convened in a board work session on August 37 at 6:00 PM. For the purpose of reviewing the portion of Monday's August 11 regular board meeting and designating exit items as to here designate reports and recognitions posted in the meeting notice as required by law. I'd like to welcome our members of the audience and those who are here and are on board of trustees. We're here to set goals, listen to reports, approve budgets, contracts, personal appointments, and make policy for the district. It's not the role of the board to make day-to-day operation decisions. The management decisions are those responsibility of superintendent. We have policies and procedures in place to resolve concerns and issues. This is a regular board meeting, the board trustees held in the public, not a meeting in the public where audience members may participate outside of the designated agenda item or citizen participation. Prior to the meeting, board members received information related to tonight's meeting. Agenda items may not be handled as necessarily in the notice. During the board meeting, we may determine a closed session is necessary. In that event, the board will be meeting closed session and consider matters duly posted for the meeting as permitted by Section 551.071 through 551.084 of the Texas Government Code. These proceedings are airing live on the district website. They'll be available on the district website following tonight's meeting. For the video to adequately reflect the proceedings, I kindly ask you please refrain from talking while others are speaking and that cell phones are turned off or in silent mode. Thank you for being here and thank you for interest in Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District. The invocation, pledge of allegiance, vision and minister statement, recognitions, awards announcements, board comments, and citizen participation will be presented on Monday, August 11 in the regular board meeting. We do have no speakers this evening, so I'll proceed with the reports portion of the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. President. I believe we have Leslie Francis to give us a report on the Basilisk survey that we did this past, I guess, May? Was it May when we did that? April, okay. Sorry about that.
Okay. Dr. Killian, Board of Trustees, as Dr. Killian just pointed out, this past spring, we conducted a parent survey contracting with Basilisk and Associates. It's a national research firm. We've worked with Basilisk since 2016. They conducted a survey force in 2016, 2022, and then again in 2025. So tonight, we're pleased to share the results of this survey with you. Batches of emails like the prior surveys were sent out. We worked closely with our technology team to send those out until a sample size of 2011 that Basilisk felt would be an adequate sample size and matching our demographics was achieved. Some of the questions that were contained in the survey, you may recall, were similar to those questions that we asked in 2016 and in 2022 to provide us with comparative data. The 2025 survey did contain some new questions that we asked him to include to measure the possible impact of education savings accounts on CFISD. So on this slide, we'll go through just some of the goals that we had for the survey. Again, to measure the general attitudes about CFISD, including the ratings of specific aspects of the district. We wanted to assess how our families are currently receiving information about the district, to gauge their awareness of school choice and voucher legislation, and to assess whether respondents are more likely to want to keep their child in CFISD or switch to a private school or other non-CFISD alternative. And then the final goal was to measure the impact of informative statements on keeping their child in CFISD or switching to a private school or non-CFISD alternative. So now I'll turn it over to Leslie Francis, and she'll go through more detailed information about the results of the survey.
Good evening. Characteristics of respondents were matched to the characteristics of CFISD students using PMS data. These included free and reduced lunch, ethnicity, zip code, and at-risk. Additionally, geographic or zip code representation was equally important. This slide shows how the percentage of students by region has changed from the 2016 and 2022 surveys. Most notable is the purple section or the west side of the district that now makes up 37% of our students as compared to 30% in 2016. Additional questions were asked but not required of the parents, including age, race, gender, and income. These demographics can be used to break down the responses to each question further if desired. Tonight, I will provide you with an overview of the questions and findings. The first question was, how do you get information from CFISD? This question was asked in 2016 and 22, and the top five most popular methods of communication were: number one, CFISD emails; two, emailed school newsletters; three, pre-recorded phone calls; four, information sent home from school; and five, text messages. The methods that showed the largest changes from 2022 were information sent home from school at 85%, which is up from 79%; the CFISD website at 73%, which is down from 82%; and emailed school newsletters at 91%, which is up from 85%. Additionally, it's interesting that Facebook is the overwhelming choice for social media among our parents and has grown over the years. We have shared this feedback with our campuses for their own efforts in showcasing their campuses. I also want to point out, we added two new methods for choices: talking with other parents and campus district activities and meetings. We were extremely pleased with the results of, "Do you feel welcome at your child's school?" While we attributed the dip from 2016 to 2022 to COVID and the lack of opportunities for parental engagement on campuses, the 2025 survey indicated that 90% of parents feel strongly or somewhat welcome at their child's school, which is identical to 2016 levels. This is a testament to the strong positive culture our campus administration ensures daily and should be celebrated. Principals and campus staff, great job. When asked what the biggest and next biggest challenge facing CFISD is, 30% selected student discipline as compared to 32% in 2022. In comparison, in 2016, the biggest challenge was growth and overcrowding at 43% with discipline as the third-ranked challenge. A majority of parents, 66%, believe that the academic standards are about right, although in 2016, 14% indicated too low; in 2022, 17% indicated too low; and in 2025, we see the highest levels of the three surveys with 21% indicating too low. For the family's youngest child, the education provided was rated as good or excellent by 76%. The classroom and school environment was rated as good or excellent by 73%. And the extracurricular activities available were rated as good or excellent by 53%. There are slight differences in opinions at different children's ages, but extracurricular activities were the highest category in poor to fair. We also attributed that possibly to coming in at the elementary age, since we don't really know how young their youngest child is. One of the main goals of the survey was to find out if parents knew about education savings accounts and what their thoughts were about school choice. When asked if the respondent had seen, read, or heard anything about education savings accounts, 56% indicated yes. When these responses were broken down by household income, the higher the income, the higher the percentage of parents that were informed about ESAs. In fact, with a household income greater than $125,000, 76% answered yes. Another interesting finding was that of those who said academics are too low, 65% are aware of ESAs. When thinking about next year for your child, 83% indicated planning to keep their child in CFISD, with only 6% indicating switching to a non-CFISD school. However, it's important to point out that 11% are unsure, and 11% of our student base is approximately 13,000 students. When asked what the main reasons were for keeping their child in CFISD, the most popular were likes public education or CFISD, works for CFISD, academics and teachers, and location and convenience. In contrast, the main reasons for switching were academics and teachers, safety and discipline, and a better or different setting. A number of awareness statements were provided to gauge their awareness of CFISD events, programs, and general facts. Parents said that the top items that they were aware of in CFISD were free and reduced meals, GT and honors, accelerated courses, the variety of fine arts we offer, increased safety and security enhancements, and our zero-tolerance bullying policy. The items parents were least familiar with were $85 million in academic scholarships awarded, CFISD named among the best communities for music education, and that action-based labs are offered in several of our elementary schools. Additionally, parents were presented with a number of students to identify what might influence their decision to stay or leave. The top items that would influence their decisions to stay or switch: increased safety and security enhancements, college academy, proximity of campuses, zero-tolerance bullying policy, CTE courses with certifications, GT and honors accelerated courses. I mentioned that all of the questions can be broken down by a number of different characteristics and demographics, but I wanted to point out that the two statements that were most highly correlated among all demographics and characteristics were the following. Number one, with 96 campuses, CFISD has a school that is convenient to where you live. And two, CFISD has a zero-tolerance bullying policy. When asked what new programs parents would like to see offered in CFISD, the top responses included academics and teachers, special programs, sports PE cheer and dance, STEM robotics, coding and AI, and buses and transportation. And I do want to point out that this survey was conducted prior to the adoption of the 2526 budget and the reinstatement of transportation. The last three slides summarize the key findings I reviewed with you tonight. Additionally, the survey results will be posted on the district website following tonight's meeting. And at this time, I'm going to pass it back to Dr. Killian, who will share with you how we have already used this critical parent feedback and plans for the upcoming future.
Thank you very much, Leslie. I also want to just say thank you very much to Teresa and Leslie and all the folks that served on our committee that reviewed all this and came up with what I'm about to talk about. We've already got a lot of things in place that I believe that, from their great work, is going to really pay dividends. And it also reinforced some of the things that we already knew that we needed to focus on this year. So it's going to be, I think it's going to be a really good year for our parents, our teachers, and our kids going forward. So if you give me the next slide. Sorry, I don't have the clicker. Oh, does somebody have the clicker? Oh. Sorry, I don't know if I should call it something other than the clicker. That's what my dad always used to call even the remote control. Anyway, where's the clicker, Douglas? Anyway. So just to focus on a few things that, why we kind of looked forward in terms of what this survey did and kind of wrap it around what happened with the legislature. So you see a lot of choice out there, and you can see that parents are very interested in some choice things that are in our schools and what we offer and convenience and discipline and all sorts of things like that. So we kind of focused our efforts around those topics. And you can see some of the things that, why we think choosing CFISD is so important. And that became kind of our mantra that we were going to do for this year. We took our path to amazing and great work by our committee and came up with choose the path to amazing, because it really is about choice at this point. So that's what our efforts are going to be wrapped around. And in the 89th legislature, you can see that, obviously, parent rights, engagement, the whole school choice piece with the education savings accounts, and also virtual education were very important in that session, along with discipline and teacher rights. And I'll tell you, that's one of the reasons, we were already seeing some of these things about discipline, about things like virtual education and options for our kids, and then what parents wanted was more choice, those kinds of things, even in our school district. So that's what we kind of focused our efforts on in terms of our plan for this whole year. And I'll get a little bit deeper in some of these things as we go. So one of the background, too, is that when we did our demographic study and looked at what was going on in our community, obviously, we're about 92% built out in our community. So we're also seeing kind of a declining in student enrollment, a combination of we just don't have huge neighborhoods coming in that are balancing off some of the things like, well, our parents and our community members are not moving out of homes, and we're not regenerating in some of our neighborhoods. So that's a challenge for us. And quite frankly, interest rates and all that. I mean, people are making choices to stay where they're at, and it's a great community to live in. But that also presents problems for us in terms of where schools are located, all sorts of stuff that we have to be concerned about. So we need to attract kids into these systems where we have some space. So and then other places, we don't have space. The other thing, too, is that we noticed, too, with the increase in terms of private, private school voucher pieces, but then also virtual education has been a drain on us as well, because we haven't been able to offer that. We were able to offer a little bit of that during COVID, but there was strict restrictions there. So the legislature solved that for us. So one of the things that we're going to be able to provide this year is some type of virtual education in terms of course recovery or maybe advancement that you want to. If you're in one of the surrounding school districts or anywhere across the state of Texas, we're going to be a competitor in that. And you'll get introduced to our brand-new virtual principal that will be starting off that process. And Tanya and her shop are going to be working closely about providing some of those options. And I really do believe that, you know, before the pandemic, the commissioner spent a lot of time talking about how, or right during the pandemic, talking about how that was very challenging, even though we had a virtual schools network, they weren't particularly performing very well, and there was a limit to which schools were in it, and you couldn't get into that. Well, now we're getting into it, so we're going to control that marketplace. We're going to be the choice. That's kind of our theme for this year. We're going to make us the choice for everybody that wants to come to a high-quality school, either virtually or in person. So it'll also help us with some of the other challenges we have in terms of that kind of flat or declining enrollment. So it'll provide us maximizing our resources in the district as well. And then, of course, we have inter-district transfers that we all approved last year. So we're doing a really good job of trying to get that word out to surrounding community, and the numbers are actually showing that we do have kids coming in. And we're going to have to work on some other things to attract kids into our school system as well. And from that survey, I think probably one of the major things is those extracurricular, co-curricular things. You know, we tried out last year, we tried out the whole dual-language piece. So we're just going to have to keep doing things like that. And I think we had a great suggestion by one of our coaches about, hey, you know what? Middle school, why don't we try out soccer? We don't have soccer right now. Boy, that would differentiate us from everybody around us in terms of the vouchers and the private schools. So and it'll add to our program as well and just make us that much more competitive when we get into high school. So there's going to be a few things like that. In addition, you know what? We have a district vision and a mission and a graduate profile that wants to make a very well-rounded student. And so having those extracurricular and co-curricular opportunities, which we're already very rich in, we need to just do a better job of sharing that. And then finding those other niches that we can go into to help attract kids into our school system, because we have a great school system, we just need to do a little bit better job in terms of communication, I mean, take it to another level. And when I say that, that is not an indictment of our system or anything like that. We're in a completely different world now. And so it's not just about a communications department communicating. It's about all of us talking about the great things that are going on and sharing what's going on in our community and our schools. And so we're going to, we're going to work on doing an even better effort in that kind of stuff. So and then I just, we kind of came down to in this committee, and we kind of settled on these topics as what we were going to focus on this year. Number one is that customer service piece. You know, we're at 90% in terms of how people feel welcome and all that stuff, but it's not just about that. So that we have a room for improvement, obviously. But also, it's also about our departments. It's about our HR, it's about our finance and our operations department, and our service to other people as well. So we're going to be concentrating on customer service this year all across our entire school district. The other thing is that discipline thing. I just have to keep coming back to that. Since the pandemic, it seemed like discipline has been an issue across the entire state. We've seen a lot more behaviors and a lot more extreme behaviors that have happened in lower and lower grade levels. And that's why Teresa and I spent quite a bit of time going down to the legislature. And then we were also in a group with Thompson and Horton, where we were actually trying to get the legislature to amend the Chapter 37 rules so that we could be, we could be stricter with discipline. We could, there were, we needed more tools in our toolkit to help our teachers in the classroom and also to help when we're having a disruption in the classroom. There are a whole bunch of other learners in that classroom as well, and we have to have a tool to be able to go on with their learning while addressing the other child's misbehavior and getting them back on track. So there are a lot of things that Deb's group that have put into the handbook that are lining up with what we're doing for discipline. And I challenge the administrators to, we need to hold kids accountable. We need to also think about our teachers and their ability to teach, but then also the rest of the kids in the classroom to make sure we're taking it to the next level. And then the parental engagement, it was part of the legislature's push as well, but we really have focused on the fact that we need to make sure we have an active and very involved parental, parent-teacher organization at every level so that we can make sure they're all coming in and we're meeting their needs, right? And then just the student engagement piece. That's, I think the cellphone piece has all been a part of that, too. So we've got all our information about that. We're going to be doing more along that lines. And then you saw in the survey, too, about academics. We're going to be concentrating on some things there as well. You know, we've already taken some action in terms of our policy on grades, right? Our weighted grades right now, weighted GPA now gives the biggest weight to kids that prioritize going AP and dual-credit route. So a higher rigor. And then K is the next level, and so we're going to be pushing up that rigor across the whole district and looking for that Meats and Masters on the assessments. That's our big focus this year and anything we can do there. And I know that Tanya's got some other work know that Tanya's got some other work that she wants to do around GT and some other things that we might mention a little bit later if you have questions about that. And then just finally, the way we kicked it off was, we kicked it off with the principals and also the administrators the week before, and then we followed it up. But then Irene's group and her staff really got out there and started talking about how we can actualize that in CIPs and a needs assessment and all that. So we're going to be focusing this year, even in our campus improvement plans and our district improvement plans, on what we can do to, you know, I mean, have people choose us, right? What can we do to engage parents? What can we do to make our, our instruction more exciting and our campuses and more options for our kids? And then just in general, addressing the discipline pieces that I know we have concerns in our community. And then finally, to just what we can do with that customer service piece. We're all going to be a part of this, all the departments, all of the, from my office, all the way through the entire district, we're going to be focused on those areas. And that's kind of our encapsulated, and we're going to start a book study, and it's with Ms. Mulder. And they, she wrote a book along with, I can't remember who her co-author is. Anyway, it's about hello, we're public schools and we have an image problem. So we're going to be talking about being ambassadors for our district and ambassadors for public schools and do that outreach to get people comfortable about coming in and being excited about what we have to offer here. We have a ton of programs. It was interesting in that a survey was some of the things that aren't seeming, seeming to sink in. I don't think our, our parents realize, like, we got charter schools out there saying, oh, you can 100% college acceptance. Well, that's great. But we have almost 800 kids that are graduating with an associate's degree before they even graduate from high school. There's not college, there are not charter schools doing that. We're doing that. So we need our parents to know that we're the choice for higher education. Also in our CTE programs, I saw robotics not on there, or on there as one of the things they, we need. We have a robotics program. It's a fantastic robotics program. So obviously, we need to get more of that word out. And then just looking at, Teresa pointed out this very important, some more activities and more clubs and things that we can do at the elementary and middle school levels because we've got tons of things for kids to do. We have comprehensive high schools that are amazing with their programs. But we also need to make sure that we're building those programs up in our elementaries and our middle schools by providing that support there and providing those options because that choice option is out there and we want to be the best choice. And so that's, that's kind of what we got out of the survey. It kind of reinforced some things. And that's how we're going to move forward from, from this time on. So there's no reason to do a survey if you're not going to take any action around it. So, and we've already got that action started. So thank you very much to Teresa and the entire group that spent time sorting all this out and what we needed to focus on. They gave me a direction that I really needed, gave me some focus I needed, and I really appreciate that. Thank you. And we got questions if we need them. Any questions, board members?
I'm going to echo a little bit of what, gone it. I'm going to echo a little bit of what Dr. Killian said, but I have a couple of questions for the broader group. So first of all, when I'm looking at this survey, I'm looking at it through the lens of, you know, how does Cyfair stack up against the competition? And you were talking about that, Dr. Killian, you know, what are we doing? What are our strong suits? Where's our room for improvement as we're competing against other districts, homeschool, private school, things like that? One of the things I was encouraged about the survey, it seems like we've had more respondents year after year, or the last times we've done this. So the number of respondents increasing, I think, is encouraging. I was glad to see that. One of the questions I have is, so what was our level of involvement in crafting the actual questions? Was it the consulting group that put the questions together? Did we collaborate with them? Were there our questions? Who came up with the questions that were submitted?
Well, I'll, I'll start with, some of them are, were recurring questions.
Okay.
So you really want to have, when you're doing a survey, some things you can go back and look at trends, right? But then also with the choice piece, I know that Teresa was heavily involved with, with doing that. So Teresa, if you want to go in.
Yeah. We worked directly with Mike Basilese. We shared with him, again, what focus we wanted for the survey. And then he started crafting questions around that. We gave some edits and feedback, but in the end, you know, just with his level of expertise in, in conducting surveys, he, he helped really craft that language and finalize it for us.
And ASVP did have, committee did have a chance also to give some input and back to Basilese and, and then relied on their science.
Great, thank you. Because one, one of the questions that I'd like to make a recommendation going forward on, so there were a tremendous amount of helpful information. One of the slides, which was, what are the main reasons you will keep your child in CFISD? And the number one answer was likes public ed slash CFISD slash works in Cyfair, right? I think it'd be helpful if we could break that out going forward. Like, you know, there are parents who are going to work in Cyfair, and they're definitely going to send their kids to Cyfair. I would love to know how many people are sending their kids to Cyfair because they're pro-public ed, and they're going to send their kids to their local school. I would love to know how many people are sending their kids to Cyfair because it's Cyfair, right? So if we broke that out a little bit, I think we can actually pull some, some better information out of that going forward.
It was actually, wasn't that an open-ended response? So that's just a summary of it? And then we could have the raw data? We can look at the raw data?
If that exists, that would be very helpful.
Is that right? Because I, I do remember us leaving it as an open-ended response based on committee feedback so that we could get, I don't know if Basilese changed that or not, but that had been our recommendation. So we could look at very precise language from our community.
Natalie, you're absolutely correct on that. Those couple of screens that were in white where I kind of summarized what the top four or five responses were, those were all open-ended questions. And the printout is about this tall
Okay.
of all the answers. And that's exactly what they did was they tried to create some categories in order to have an executive summary of the responses of that. But we do have the raw data, and printed out, it's about this tall.
Right. Again, going, you know, going forward, and we're talking about all the, all the educational competition, it would just be really good to know how many people in our community are sending their kids to public schools because they're, they're for their local schools, and they're going to send their kids to their local school. We'd also, it'd also be, would be really good to know, like, we're sending our kids to Cyfair because it's Cyfair and we're pro-Cyfair. So that information's helpful. I'm glad we have it, and we can always pull that out. And so that information is going to be very helpful with us going into all these, you know, activities on which we're trying to communicate, communicate how great Cyfair is and all the educational opportunities we present. One other slide that I found very interesting was the, okay, in general, what do you think of the academic standards of CFISD? And Leslie, I think you addressed this. There was a growth year over year, and they, there's a, there's a perception that our academic standards are too low in Cyfair. And, you know, as a board member, I can, I can tell the community straightforward that our academic standards is as high as they've ever been, and we have never dropped our academic standards. And nor will we ever drop our academic standards. And, you know, I'm not going to ask everybody to speculate as to why they think that's increasing, but I'll do the speculation for you then, right? One of the things that, and it goes back to making sure that we communicate who we are and what we do, is I believe that, that in, that there's an increase in this incorrect perception of our academic standards from, there are just some people out there who are anti-public ed, and they're on media, they're on social media, and they're trying to create this narrative of that public schools aren't academically rigorous. Those are some things that, you know, are outside of our control, but we should always be able to maintain our, the control of our narrative, saying that Cyfair, the academic rigor is as high as it's ever been, and you will get the best education period. You'll get the most rigorous academic curriculum period at Cyfair. And so that's something, so if that narrative is growing outside of our control with media and social media and just folks out there saying incorrect things, we need to be, make sure that we're aware of that. And we should always, you know, combat that in our own way and just attest to how great our academic standards are here. So that's, that was something that just jumped out to me that we should always be mindful of and cognizant of and be just shouting from the mountaintops how great our academic rigor is. Because we don't want people to start getting this incorrect perception of the rigor of, of the academics here. So that was something that jumped out at me. But this information was very helpful. I'm so glad we did this survey. So thank you very much for all your efforts, everyone who was involved. Leslie, Teresa, thank you very much. Academic Vision Safety Committee and Dr. Killian.
Can I let Dr. Gory just to, as a response to your statement about academic standards? Because Dr. Gory has been working on that and just trying to look at especially our GT program. So.
So prior to the survey, we heard from the parents, we've heard from students, we heard from parents at the superintendent's, the part of the superintendent's parent group, and their concerns regarding GT. So we started our response prior to that. And so looking very closely at elementary, our advanced academics team this summer developed and has provided resources to teachers that they can use for identified GT students at elementary. Parents wanted something that was set apart from what the regular curriculum is. And we do have those opportunities for them, beginning with this 25, 26 school year. They've been provided for teachers, and they can definitely utilize those. There's some really good resources. So if you'd like to see them, we will provide them for you. And also on the rigor part, because we've heard increase it constantly about increasing rigor, increasing rigor, we do have a very rigorous and robust curriculum, absolutely. Are we always looking to review and make sure that we are making edits and changing with the needs of our students and the needs of the time? Absolutely. At secondary, we are implementing common assessments and All-Star and ELC-tested areas to closely monitor incremental growth and outcomes and make sure that we're aligning those instructional expectations with what the demands are for our students. At elementary, we've made some strategic changes, particularly in math, because that has been an area of concern. We have integrated daily math fluency opportunities for retrieval practice and concrete checks for understanding, just to make sure that we are hitting all of our targets. And in ELAR, lessons are now, they now contain more developed and explicit differentiation opportunities for teachers. So we hear, we heard the concerns, and you're right, Justin, we do have to be the voice. We have to make sure we are shouting from the mountaintop that yes, we do have a robust curriculum and providing examples of what that looks like.
Dr. Gory, was that in all the on-level and all the levels of classes that that rigor project happened as far as the curriculum explicit opportunities for differentiation?
Yes, ma'am.
Awesome. I love the math. This fluency gets so simple, but that's so powerful. That was something that I think could make a big difference. And I was, I mean, I'll say, my, trustee Heineman's daughter went off and just had every opportunity available to her after the rigor of our system. My kid went off to UT and had zero trouble. In fact, her, professors were asking, did you use AI to do your writing? She told me she had to, Mom, I have to simplify it a little bit because I think it's AI. I mean, so we've had incredible opportunities at rigor in our system for our students. And so it was that middle group of kids. So when you mentioned earlier, the, we, we are going to change our grading scale. So now what does it look like for those classes that are not at the top tier as far as the rigor? Do you feel like those, I'm going to make a statement first, actually. The, the curriculum that our, your team, the team wrote here that replaced those little pieces of content in those 13 chapters was excellent. In fact, it had me thinking, I don't know why we wouldn't always write our own curriculum, literally, take control of things. I know it's a little bit too much work, maybe, especially with the trimmed-down central office. But I just want to say the team did an incredible job. The rigor was there, the balanced approach, showing it in a balanced perspective, having kids do the critical thinking, not being told what to think. Excellent. So I don't know, can you tell me, like, with that, knowing what we have as far as skill, what we did with our on-level curriculum? Because there are 21% of our families telling us this, right? And so what did, what do we do there? And then, and then in the surveys that we're doing at the campus, and that may be a question for Irene in her new role, are we asking that question at the campus level, like, from year to year? So they'll be able to know and see that exact, like, in the, not so long in between as our Basilese surveys, but in the year to year? So maybe Dr. Gory first, and then Irene next.
So the rigor is at every level. It doesn't matter if it is an on-level, K-level, GT-level, all of the lessons will receive the same type of rigour of your on-level, and you need to scaffold up those opportunities in there. So we did not just provide, provide it for our kids who are gifted or who can handle the more rigorous curriculum easier. It's for everyone. So it is integrated into every single opportunity for students to learn.
And in our first principal meeting, we did really talk about the importance of telling our story at each individual campus, just to get the message out there about all the great things that we have to offer here in Cyfair. So we really focused on what social media platforms each campus is using, reminding them that our websites are also a great source of information for parents, for them to post the things that are happening at our campus. So part of the needs assessment was looking at what platforms are we using and how often are we posting information? We also asked them to look at parent engagement activity. So what are we doing to engage our parents and bring them into our classrooms? What do we currently have? And then how can we improve that as well? And then, of course, the student engagement piece, looking especially at elementary and middle school outside of the classroom, what other activities can we offer that will help attract more of our kiddos to their campuses?
I think this is my most exciting day in four years on this board because everything you nailed, Dr. Killian, right there, and the team worked on, the list of the things to go at. I feel like this is what we've been, to me, this is what mattered most and has mattered most. It's really exciting. I think that this, the parents gave us our data, your responses are completely and wonderfully appropriate and aligned, and the team is totally the right team to get it done. I just think it's a really bright day for Cyfair. I'm super excited. And the parent, the parent engagement piece, just hearing you talking about in classrooms and stuff, that has been something I've had great concern about. We, by system, we systematically excluded parents by having just a PTA in elementary, then even tony those back from PTOs to other organizations for the financial reason. And then at middle school, only if you want to go into do a one-time opportunity to volunteers, and then at high school, booster club, maybe I don't have a sports kid. It just didn't engage me. And I know even my own self, COVID came into it. But I never found the way to find parents and be able to support my campus and high school. It was literally a, and I did try booster club, and it was tiny, right? And it wasn't, it was very focused on a very particular thing. So I'm super excited to see what we come up with there because parents are the power. They are the voice. They're the ones talking. They're telling you here, even in the survey, they're talking to each other. At what percentage? Do you have it open? Talking with others, 49%. So I think that is, you know, so incredible opportunity for us to really have parents understand us and talk about us and choose us. So this is just great. There's so much to dig into. I would like that fat, fat primary source data. Not, you don't have to print it, but just it can be digital, just because I want to dig through, through treasures in there that we can use. It's really, really exciting. Thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you to the committee and everybody involved, too. This information is so important, and it helps us to be able to encourage and support every way that we can. And I do have a question on the response to student discipline. Was there any parsing of that at all, or that was just a general question of they checked the box on that?
So all of the questions can be analyzed by the demographic groups and the characteristics, but the discipline did not go deeper than that
Okay.
as to the question.
Okay. Okay. And also, just to be good stewards of our resources, do we, how much did the study cost the district to do this?
I am going to ask if you give me a few minutes because I can pull the invoice so I don't publicly share the wrong amount.
Sure, absolutely. And while she's doing that, and thank you, Teresa, I really appreciate it. I was out at the transportation training event today. Wow, what an exciting place to be and to see the energy of all the bus drivers and to know that we're almost completely fully staffed on bus drivers is so super exciting and makes my heart so happy. I attended one of the trainings with Francisco, and he literally was talking about how we work together, how, how we go face to face, how we connect with each other. And I love that he was talking about how we need to be able to tell our stories. So I saw that in action today. So I just wanted to share that.
I have the invoice here now. Christine, 42,408 was the invoice. And again, it was the largest number, the largest sample size. We asked for the maximum on this, and it was more respondents in this survey than the two prior surveys.
Thank you for that information.
First of all, I want to thank the parents who participated in the survey, that their willingness to take the time to open the emails and respond to the survey is very much appreciated because that's what provides us this incredible feedback. And I am grateful and proud of the, the work of the administration to take the feedback and the, the data and to turn it into actual items. So thank you so much. You know, Justin said something really interesting about the outside influences, an anti-public education influence. And I think that's really insightful to think about, like, that percentage. And so I appreciate you bringing that up. I think also it's important to recognize that closer to home, there's also been some, you know, different messaging, like getting back to basics. Well, that could also decrease our parents' feelings about the academic standards of our, of our district. Things like misinformation regarding the reading abilities of our students, removing chapters from advanced chapters from advanced courses and creating anxiety about instructional materials for AP classes. So I think it's important that we also take some responsibility for the messaging we give from here, in addition to what messaging happens outside that, as Justin said, we can't control.
And echoing some of the comments from our, my colleagues, thank you very much, Leslie, Teresa and the team that put this together, great work. A couple of things that I thought was interesting. So when we were looking at highly correlated data, discipline was one of the items, but at the same time, when we looked year-over-year over the past few years, as we've already commented, discipline was also one of the key areas. We've tried multiple programs over the years on how do we empower teachers? My first question to you, Doug, is that as you were at legislation and now at the, you know, after we've seen the legislation that's already been passed, do you feel that we've got new tools that we can equip our teachers with?
You know, that was the whole thing that we went to the legislature with, is that we needed more tools in our toolbox. We weren't trying to over-discipline kids. We were just, we had just been limited over the years as to what we could do. And so, and we were seeing behaviors that we hadn't seen before in some of our classrooms. So I know there was a number of groups that testified the other way, that maybe we were going too far, but I think the pendulum had kind of swung too far to one side and we're kind of getting a little bit back to where we, we have the tools that we can address things in the classroom. You know, and I've had a few people reach out to me, for instance, about the cell phone thing. We had already kind of started down that pathway, you know? We had already done the elementary school and the middle schools and kind of come together, the principals deciding to, you know, we're, we're going to be more strict and, you know, a little bit more strict than the, the high school, but we hadn't gone all the way. And yeah, it went all the way in those hearings there, they just, they think it's, it's a distraction. And among other things, it's a discipline problem, too, for, for us with what kids use some of that stuff for. It, it's really sad to say because we, we have a lot of great kids that are using it all correctly or not using it when they're, they're not supposed to. So, but yeah, little things like that. I, I do believe we have a lot more, a lot more tools to be able to address some issues.
All right, very good. And then you also commented that your team would be continuing to look at discipline and how we're doing and what our opportunities are to improve. So I'd be curious throughout the fall, what your findings are, new programs that you implement? Because discipline is one of those topics that it gets in the mind of a community and there's a branding that would occur. And, you know, part of the messaging that all of our schools have is back to the community, this is what's new, this is where we're being successful, this is what we learned. Our communities all know where we've had opportunities to improve. And so, I think part of the messaging is where do we embrace that and where are we, where are we seeing improvement? When I think about academics, you know, Dr. Gori, your ability to track year-over-year student growth, I challenge any school, charter, private, et cetera, to show information along those lines. I don't think they can. I think the rigor of your own reporting to show this is how we care about our kids and how we're tracking their improvement and we know where they are and how we're going to improve, I think those are wonderful messages to share. So it's, it's all of those communications wrapped up. But, you know, encouraging our, our teachers and all of our principals, our communities are ready to help and they want to get involved, give them the opportunity.
I also, there was another issue. Actually, the teacher recruitment and retention committee, we will have our meeting and we intend to convene a committee of teachers and others around discipline to give feedback as the new code of conduct is implemented and see, including some of our teachers who were identified in the TIA program as exceptional. So I'm excited. And Luke, something reminded me of a comment you made, when you look at the other new programs people want and it says STEM, you know, it has AI on here. You had suggested, and I really don't know exactly, it's like it stuck with me after you mentioned and we talked with Dr. Gori after our meeting, how we can really launch almost like a study group over the year to look at like the role of the impact on all layers of everything, how we work, how the students are working in the classroom, how the teachers, all that. AI is changing everything. And so, anyway, it just made me think about that. I thought you made a really good suggestion and I'd be willing to partner with you on creating an ad hoc committee or if the administration wants to do it, whatever that might look like, whether it's board committee or administration-driven committee or both. Because I think our whole world is changing with that and it's something that we probably need to get. We have an incredible amount of expertise in our community. I talk to people out there all the time, they work in AI, they're looking at AI in education, maybe even in our virtual school, there'll be some role for it. So.
Yeah, I've had some discussion and not to get too far off topic, but yeah, we've had discussion with Dr. Killian, so we'll unpack that.
Just a couple of thoughts. Irene, you mentioned telling the story, right? And in the survey, it said that we gave out $85 million in scholarships. And a lot of times you hear from private schools that they're college-ready kids. And that's kind of the thing, sometimes public schools don't get that good reputation, but yet there's $85 million in scholarships that were given away. And I think that's telling the story. We have to do a better job as a district to tell that story, that kids are walking away through the college academy, through dual credit. They're walking away with years of, of college credit. And I think that's the thing we have to do a better job is telling our brand story as well. I think that's just a comment I would say is we got to do a better job to tell the community. You also talked about discipline and discipline is such a broad topic. I'm not sure how it was worded on the survey, but is that, is the kids receiving too much discipline or are we not disciplined enough, right? I don't know that question on there as well. I don't know how it was asked, so I really can't answer that question. I think it's because there's, there's discipline problems and it's causing disruptions in class, is what I hear from teachers, effort teachers I talk to. I would like to get to systemic problem, you know? What is the specific discipline problems that we have in common? And then, how do we address those problems going forward to do that? And then, how do we support the teachers to address those problems? Those are things I would say we look at first by talking to teachers, asking them for their feedback and then what can we do? Is it changing the code of conduct? Is it changing policy? Whatever it is. Again, I don't have the answers. I think teachers do because they're, they're in the first level of that and I'll refer to them. Seeing no more questions, we'll continue on. Thank you very much for your time, everyone involved in that. Great study. 7B, the administration provided written end-of-year report on progress of strategic plan guard rule three, community relations.
That's a written report and it's just questions only. It was a very lengthy report and I will point out that all of that information will also be included in the superintendent's evaluation that you receive on Monday night.
Were there any questions from the board on this? Fantastic. Thank you very much. The board now review the consent agenda items during the review of the following items. Any board member may review, remove one or more items, at which time will be discussed and voted on individually. If any board member has a question, please ask to be recognized. 8A, the minutes from June 23rd. 8B, election order calling for election on Tuesday, November 4th. 8C, the board consider approving resolution to declare good cause for exemption of armed security officer requirement. 8D, the board consider approving agreement for purchase of attendance credits. 8E, the board consider approving the individual authorized to calculate the note, new tax revenue. 8F, the board will consider approving on second read additions, revisions, the following district policies, 8F1, CCA, pardon me, 8F2, CB, and 8F3, CDA. 8G, the board consider approving a memorandum of understanding between Harris County Juvenile Board and Cyfair. 8H, the board consider approving a request for TEA waiver to train staff on various educational strategies for the school year of 2025, 2026. And then, 8I, the board consider approving contracts for 8I1, college readiness and career interest test, and 8I2, pure flash array, E quote. Seeing no questions, we'll now continue moving on to the non-consent agenda items. 9A, the board consider approving the 25, 26 student code of conduct. Dr. Stewart?
Okay, good afternoon. First, we want to say thank you for this opportunity to present the 25, 26 student code of conduct. Each year, we review and update the code on new laws and input from our school community and students. This year, there are eight major changes based on legislative passed during the 89th session, specifically House Bill 6 and 1481. And as Dr. Killian mentioned, some of the input from him and other cabinet members helped to shape some of the changes that Dr. Ogumake is going to share with you today. These updates cover several areas such as suspension, teacher removal, and electronic devices. And it really will let you know where we're going to begin some of the work that we just discussed about discipline. So you'll see some of those changes that may have a great impact on some of the concerns. So at this time, Dr. Ogumake, will you share the key changes for the 25, 26 school year?
Thank you, Dr. Stewart.
Do you have the clicker?
I do.
Okay. Right here?
Good evening, Dr. Killian, President Henry, and Board of Trustees. As Dr. Stewart shared, we're required to review and adopt a student code of conduct annually. In doing that, we seek input from stakeholders, which include students, parents, staff, and community members. Additionally, we meet with the District Educational Improvement Committee, the DEIC, to share information about the code and provide an opportunity for feedback. All feedback gathered is reviewed by a team of district and campus staff. Any recommended changes are shared with our legal services department. Aside from the minor editing and formatting improvements to enhance the readability of the document, as Dr. Stewart shared, most of the updates this year are as a result of laws passed by the 89th Texas Legislature, specifically House Bill 6 and House Bill 1481. Communicating the changes to the code is an important part of the process. We want to ensure that our parents have access to an acknowledged receipt of the code. This is done when they complete the annual student information update online. Parents are always encouraged to review the code with their students. We make the code available to our community in several ways, on our district website and on individual websites, both in English and Spanish. And we also have paper copies available at every campus upon request, in the principal's office, the library, and the registrar's office. To help our students understand expectations for behavior, campus administrators conduct code of conduct presentations twice in the year, in the fall and the spring. Students who register during the year receive information about the code during student orientation. Our communications team also pushes out important changes to our community via several social media platforms and campus messaging. Now, I will walk you through the key changes made to the code this year, starting with House Bill 6. The first change related to House Bill 6 updates guidelines for in-school suspension or DMC. Previously, when students were assigned DMC, there was a maximum cap of three days per incident. House Bill 6 removed that cap. This year, there is no time limit for DMC assignments. Students can now be assigned DMC for more than three days. However, if an assignment exceeds 10 days, a progress review is required. Now, I'm going to move to the next update and that relates to out-of-school suspension. This next key change of House Bill 6 expanded the allowable reasons for out-of-school suspensions for students below grade three and for those identified as homeless. Previously, students below grade three or students experiencing homelessness could only receive suspensions in cases involving weapons, drugs, or alcohol. House Bill 6 has modified this provision to allow out-of-school suspension when a student threatens the immediate health and safety of other students, the teacher, or any adult in the classroom. Or when a student engages in repeated or significant behavior that causes disruption in the classroom, which interferes with the teacher's ability to teach and with other The next update revised the existing process for formal teacher removal. Before this year, teachers had to have written documentation of student discipline before they could formally remove a student from class. House Bill 6 has created more flexibility in the guidelines by expanding the allowable reasons for removal and removing the provision requiring documentation of behavior. Beginning this year, students exhibiting repeated and unruly behaviors that disrupt the classroom, including bullying behaviors, can now be removed for a single incident. This next update in House Bill 6 clarified the disciplining of students receiving special education services. Before this law, campuses were required to hold an IEP prior to issuing a consequence requiring a removal. Now, students can receive a consequence prior to the art if the conduct being addressed involves bullying, harassment, or making a hit list. House Bill 6 also updated conduct relating to nicotine e-cigarette offenses. It modified the consequence for first-time possession and/or use of e-cigarette items from a mandatory to a discretionary ALC placement. However, selling, giving, or delivering an e-cigarette to another person remains a mandatory ALC placement. Last year, students were placed at the ALC for the first-time possession of or use of e-cigarettes. This year, districts have the option to assign at least a 10-day DMC in lieu of an ALC placement for first-time e-cigarette offenses. As a district, we have decided to implement the 10-day DMC option. When a student engages in certain violent offenses on or off school property, as listed under Level 4 of our code, there's a requirement for placement at the alternative learning center. While the list presented on the slide is not an exhaustive list of those offenses, it shows offenses that have been modified or added to the mandatory placement list for this year. Volunteer was added to the offense of retaliation. Harassment against any school employee or volunteer was added, in addition to deadly conduct, disorderly conduct with a firearm, and unlawful carry. The last key change under House Bill 6 applies to expulsions. This year, all Level 5 offenses are subject to a mandatory expulsion, regardless of whether the conduct occurs on or off school property. Additionally, HB 6 added to the list of these expellable offenses kidnapping, burglary, robbery, and assault bodily injury against a school employee or volunteer. Now, we're going to move to HB 1481, known as the Personal Communications Device Bill, which has been a hot topic of conversation. HB 1481 required that school districts adopt a policy that prohibits students from using personal communication devices during the school day unless the device is required to implement the student's IEP or 504 plan, the device is required by a student with a documented need based on a directive from a physician, or the device is necessary to comply with health or safety requirements imposed by law, the district, or school's safety protocol. Additionally, House Bill 1481 requires consequences to address violations of the established guidelines. guidelines. We recognize that the shift in expectations for students and campuses will require training to ensure consistency in implementation. To address this, we have engaged our campus principals in developing guidelines, which I will share with you shortly. This slide highlights some of the devices that are prohibited from school during the school day this year. Campus principals were surveyed for feedback regarding what constitutes a school day. Based on their responses, the district has determined that the definition of a school day, as it relates to House Bill 1481, is once a student enters the building until dismissal. Also, principals were surveyed regarding consequences for violating the new guideline. As indicated on this slide, their first choice for a first offense was confiscation of the phone or device, a warning issued to the student, and the student allowed to pick up the device at the end of the school day in the front office or a campus-designated location. Their first choice for a second offense was confiscation of the phone or device. The parent must pick up, at the end of the school day, the phone or device in the front office. So the parent is required to pick up for a second offense. And finally, their first choice for a third and additional offense was to confiscate the phone or device. A parent or guardian must pick up the device in the front office, and the student will be disciplined as outlined in the student code of conduct. I want to do a quick shout-out to our communications department. We've been working with them on a branding message, which you can see on the slide. And a special shout-out to Cypress Park High School for sharing this phrase and allowing the district to polish it up and, you know, brand it. So our brand for the policies is away for the day. We believe that with this message, we are reminding students that personal communication devices are not allowed in school buildings during the school day and must be stored away for the day. This message is available in English and Spanish, and campuses will receive posters of the messaging to display in their buildings very soon. This brings me to the end of my presentation. I thank you for your time and attention. I would like to thank my team, the DEIC committee, and all other departments and campus staff for their feedback and effort in updating the code. I am happy to answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
Any questions? Go ahead.
First of all, wow. I do, I think as part of the change management plan, this probably crosses over Mr. Superintendent to, with police and other, because I do know, I think this is incredible for learning. I think that I really appreciate the thoughtfulness and the school, the campus leadership input into the layers of this, because it's going to, you know, kids have had them and they're addicted, basically. So this idea about how to fairly warn and wretched it up. But I do know parents rely a lot, whenever we have a shutdown or campus, they hear, it goes quickly through next door and everywhere else. And then, I know I get texts sometimes from different families, right? So this idea about how well we will communicate during any shutdown or emergency, they're scared of school shootings, they're scared of anything like that. And so, a lot of them had peace because they would just reach out to their kid real quick. Their kid would say, oh, I'm here, I'm doing this, it's okay, or it's a medical emergency or whatever it might be. And we get those updates, and I definitely appreciate that from Dr. Killian. We know there's a lot that happens, and a lot of times, medical and for the privacy and the respect for the person who's having a health situation, you know? But I do think that that's definitely something that needs to be thought of, because it will be quick and hard and fast, and people are a little scared. So they'll be great. Second question I had, actually, I want to do a shout-out while we're at it, talking about really being student-centered and thinking through how to do this. I feel very excited that teachers are super empowered here. Our profession lost its, like, professionalism. We took away respect and control, and kids know it when a teacher doesn't have control, it doesn't really get to control the outcome of the discipline in their classroom. And so I'm super excited for this to be something that teachers can gain back, that control, the kid can know, if I tell you to go, you go. And it's going to be me who helps you figure out how to come back, because I think that was a big miss. And so this is going to be really empowering in that way. I also want to shout out Susan Nolan's in the back. And this summer, I realized from my kid at Langham, the one that keeps me informed, I was crying because Ms. Nolan left, and I think 20-something years at Langham Creek High School. What an example of a student, someone who you can do discipline, you can be firm, just like this, in love and with respect. And, you know, there was never a time that Ms. Nolan, ooh, I get a little teared, there was never a time that she didn't make a decision that was for the children first. She took care of the kids and their needs, and then she figured out everything else. So that kind of spirit behind a student code of conduct like this, there's nothing a school can't do. And all our schools are amazing. I, of course, have the most experience with Langham Creek High School, because that's the kids, that's where I've experienced it as a parent. And it has the incredible, it's got the most amazing teachers. They have got the perfect mix of how to teach, because they have experience on them at some point, and then also how to really build positive relationships with students. And with leaders like her as well, for 20 years there, just making sure it was always student-centered. So I just wanted, I didn't know I was going to get to see you, and I'd heard that, I was a little sad myself. But thank you for everything you've done for my own family and for all the families of Langham Creek for all these years. God bless you.
Any other questions?
I just have a comment. I know it's been really hard for the cabinet and the departments to put this together, and so I wanted to say thank you. It's a huge undertaking to be able to communicate this message. Those who, in the district who've read The Anxious Generation, we know cell phones are a distraction, we know they are an issue. And when I've talked to one of the administrators in their, their school, they had limited the cellphone use. They saw bullying go down, they saw camaraderie friendships go up, test scores go up, respect go up. This is going to be a good thing for the district. You know, we ask the parents to be patient and to trust us, to let us know, you know, what they need, but they are, your kids are well taken care of in our school and in our, in our campuses. And so, this will be a true team effort, our community, to support each other and to say, we're going to keep learning first. This is the priority. It is going to, I believe, help teachers, as Dr. Blasingame said, to restore order in the classroom. And I'm super grateful for our teachers that they're going to have more attentive students, I believe, this year. So we're very excited.
Thank you for all your hard work. And thank you, Dr. Stewart and Dr. Ogumakee, for answering all my questions. I sent a lot of questions, and I appreciate the very thorough responses. Just to summarize some of my questions, it's so important for parents to go through this with your students. There's been, there are a lot of changes. I know Dr. Ogumakee hit the high points and the things that are required by law, but there's a lot of things that may impact your student, you may not realize it. The item regarding harassment of an employee, well, I asked the question, does that include social media? And it does. It's very important that you talk to your students about what they post on social media about their teachers, because that can be considered harassment. Regarding e-cigarettes, there's been an addition of the pouches, the Zen. I don't know if you all know about that, but that's a thing. So make sure you're talking to your students about that, because that would also get them in trouble at school. Something was added about exhibiting, using, or threatening to exhibit or use a firearm, even off-campus, anywhere in the community. So, parents, very important that you are locking up your firearms safely, safe storage. And that, along with this, the state legislature is now requiring school districts to communicate to parents in the community about safe storage of firearms twice a year, not just once a year anymore. And so these are all connected. So it's just so important that we talk to our students about all these things that may, they may think about doing outside of school, but it's going to affect their ability to stay in school. And I think that is all of that. Let me just double-check, there's nothing else that... I did make a request that for the new change in discipline for off, out-of-school suspension for students who are under 3rd grade and who are homeless, understand the reasoning behind that, but I did request that there's a system put in place where we maintain contact with those students so that we don't lose them over those three days, so that we can work on a return-to-school process for them. Okay? Okay. Thank you for your time and your energy.
I'm sorry, I just had one more comment. I also wanted to thank the legislators. This was a bipartisan bill on both sides of the aisle that saw that this was an issue. So I want to thank Representative Caroline Fairley for bringing it forward, and then Talarico and some others that came alongside and recognized that this is an issue. So I want to thank our legislature for putting this together as a bipartisan effort to help students in Texas. Thank you.
A couple of years ago, we had, so, before I begin, thank you again to our legislatures for equipping our teachers and our education professionals to get control of the classroom and to improve behavior off-campus as well. I remember a few years ago, we were coming back from COVID, and we looked at Dr. Henry, and we said, "Dr. Henry, we know that we have as a goal to reduce the number of in-school suspension and out-of-school expansion, out-of-school suspension, and we're letting you know right now that you take care of the district and you do what you need to do, and if it goes up, that is fine. Get done what needs to get done." So the message, I think I can speak for the board, Dr. Killian and to your team, is that if we see an increase in out-of-school suspension, in-school suspension, and all of the other, you guys will be trusted to do what's in the best interest of our community, and we will support you and have your back as your team implements their highest vision of what excellence looks like, and we all go forward. And echoing sentiments from Trustee Heineman, for parents, you know, it's a really expellable offenses on or off-school. We had some tragedies last year off-campus, and these would not be in place had those and other tragedies like them not occurred. But this is the day that we're in, and our students have to hear earlier in their life that this is not acceptable. And this will have impact on their school career if they do not regard this warning deeply. So my encouragement to all the parents, follow up with your student, know where they are, work with them. Trustee Heineman's comment regarding, what is the definition of harassment? That is very true. And students saying whatever they want to say against an admin or a school employer or volunteer, we should uphold this to the letter of the law for the benefit of our kids. So, we will have your back.
Just want to say, I appreciate that. You know, you brought up a great point about off-campus behavior. That was one of the things that we testified to, right, Teresa? That we were really concerned that it was not a mandatory placement. And so, one of the issues that we had was that our JJAEP here would not accept those or would charge us for those. And so, this clears that up. So they're going to have to take them. And they should, because it's a safety issue for the rest of our kids and for our staff. So really, really happy about that. So thank you.
And as a parent of a child in high school, having those hard conversations about the cellphone policy, because, you know, they're all not very happy. Like you just mentioned, it's a good time to have those other conversations, like they mentioned, to go through the code of conduct and talk about good behavior versus bad behavior and consequences for those behaviors. So, to me, I appreciate the early-on presentations y'all did. Y'all did a great job of doing that and communicating that throughout the, throughout the different systems. And as a father of a kid, it's made a big difference. And so, we sat down, we talked about that. And so it's a good opportunity to talk with your kid and have those conversations, like you just mentioned. So thank you very much to both of you all for all your hard work. We appreciate it.
Thank you. One more thank you before I leave. I want to shout out to Adri Price. She's one of the, the discipline director. She tracked all the changes in the document and maintained it. Sometimes it was fast and furious, so thank you so much, Adri. Thank you.
Thank you as well. 9B, the board consider approving on first reading and additions, revisions, and deletions of district policies. 9B1, EHBC. 9B2, EHBCA. Any questions on these? Okay. Continue on. 9C, the board consider approving on dual reading, additions, revisions, or deletions of district policies. 9C1, BE. 9C2, BED. 9C3, DEC. 9C4, DC. 9C5, DH. 9C6, EFB. 9C7, EIA. 9C8, EMB. 9C9, FA. And 9C10, FNCE. I know we see packets on these. Do you have any questions about any of these? I wasn't going to say EIAO. I knew you were going to say that. I thought about doing it for fun, because Marnie loves acronyms.
Marnie loves acronyms.
Any questions, Julie?
No questions. I just want to thank Marnie for her availability to answer questions, to be, to jump on the phone and walk through a couple of these policies, to provide your thought process as you were creating these and integrating the new statutes, and also providing some reassurances along the way. So thank you for your time.
I don't have a question, I just have a comment. So regarding BED local, you know, our statement of moving an agenda comment by citizens to the beginning of the meeting, that's fine. It really is fine. We had comments placed on the agenda items themselves, and we did that on purpose just to put context with what we were about to talk about adjacent to the comments that would be given. So going forward, now, all of that's going to get moved back to the front the way we used to do it. Okay? So, just in the spirit of, this is, we're trying to listen and trying to hear, you know, that's why we moved it to agenda items, now this is, you know, a state guidance, so that's fine, we abide by the state. But it'll just be a step change, and returning to a practice that we had previously.
All right, moving on.
I do have a question now. So I'm looking at the 9C6, EFB, local instructional resources, library materials revised. And Trustee Heineman just mentioned assurances, and so I just wondered if there was conversation about this policy or any assurances that you could let us know about? Maybe you could share what those questions were and anything that was clarified in this policy here about...
Can I?
Go ahead.
Can I say something real quick? I just wanted to do a shout-out, actually, because our policy was kind of ahead of its time. So when we started doing the review for the policy committee, one of the things that was very clear was that the policy we already had in place had already moved towards this. So, go ahead, Marnie.
Yes. Well, we, I mostly answered, like, where things were in the law and assured, well, like, one of the assurances is that we had already addressed something, a couple of things in the law. Julie would ask me, I'd say, well, we already had that in policy. And, you know, just making sure that we didn't miss anything, which I told her, and I think I told all of you, please look at these, because Teresa's been my, I started calling her my comfort dog, but she, you know, I would come down there, you know, and she would process all of these new bills, because there were, and Dr. Killian, and honestly, you know, Deb and Karen, I'm looking at all the people that we were like, how are we going to do this? And Irene and I are still trying to work through some stuff. We're trying to find time to meet to make sure that we're ready for the first day. But it was an unusual session in that there were just a lot of things that on June the 22nd, we were told to have in place by August 13th. And so, it was, you know, but it was good, we said many times, it was good to have that deep dive and to look, and it was nice that there were several things that we already had in our policy and some of the law. So that was, that was kind of good. But I was able to hopefully find everything. I'm still working on a couple of things, but I was able to show and hopefully assure you guys that we, as a team, because it wasn't just me, I was the scribe, but leaned on the expertise of the amazing people that I share this dais with and share this daily job with, their expertise. I think we've, we've gotten most everything in there, and I know a lot of districts are, you know, scrambling, so we're leaning on each other. Some of the local districts, we keep sharing, you know, what are you doing? But yeah, I mean, that was it. And so if you look through and if there's anything that you think I've missed, don't hesitate, and I will, you know, talk through it with you.
One thing, I don't think I looked that close, like, you guys have spent so much time. Was there any enforcement? One thing, I don't think I looked that close, like you guys have spent so much time. Was there any enforcement or punishment or consequence in the law that was put out as far as if school districts or school libraries or librarians or teachers or board members or whoever didn't follow this rule? Did they have any kind of enforcement provision in there? I didn't see it in our policy.
Well, so yeah, good question. I think in SB 12 may be what you're thinking of. And that was the big comprehensive bill that focused on transparency, parental rights, et cetera. And there were a couple of provisions in there that talked about that policies need to state that all staff are going to follow policies and that these policies are, you know, important and enforceable by the commissioner. Then there are some specific prohibitions. For instance, there are some current laws that have a list of topics. We sometimes call it the controversial law topic. But there is, and that's been in law for maybe four years now, right Theresa? But there was a provision added, I think is what you're thinking of, that said that we needed to specifically as a district, that you as a board needed to put in policy that there would be employment ramifications if you're not following the law. And so that is in D, well, I put one part in DC and then the enforcement part in DH. So when you're looking through that, Dr. Blasingame, that's why I gave everybody hard copies because it's too hard to shift between all these policies on the computer sometimes.
So is that the best way to do it? Not at each policy that's implemented to have a line? Just have an overarching piece? Does that make sense? My question is, should that in the policy related to this, should it be there? In the policy related to whatever other piece around, whatever other thing is so specific that you need to call out on policy that in that? So for example, in this DH, sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, EFB local, does it not need to have its own enforcement line?
Well, so in what DH is, and part of the reason that we put it in there is DH talks about overarching. What are the professional standards of conduct that we expect? And under the subsection of when you violate the expected standards of conduct, we have existing language that says that employees are to comply with the standards of conduct in the policy and all policies, all other policies, regulations and guidelines. If they impose a duty, a requirement, or a standard on an employee, it is our expectation and it's outlined in DH that those will be followed. And that when that's violated and whether intentionally or, you know, and it gives some specifics. You know how I will say violations are, you know, addressable. Pardon me?
No, we were just, we had a sidebar that that's also where the employee standards of conduct are in DH.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking.
Yeah, yes, exactly. But no, we were just saying that.
Sorry.
No, I was just going to, I was just going to add to what you were saying and say that DH is the proper place to put it because that's also in the employee handbook that we reference that specific policy in the employee handbook, the DH policy.
So I guess that's, I want to make sure, to me, it's, I remember when I was a teenager, I worked at The Limited and they had a little sign in the back of the dressing rooms where people would try on clothes. Forewarned is fair warned. Like basically, don't shoplift. We're telling you ahead, don't do it. We're going to take care of it. So I just want to make sure it's always super fair and super clear to our employees that, so some hidden, because policy is a mystery at that, you know, and I'm in my classroom, I was thinking about who the school board was and what the policy was. I was really there about how am I going to get the stuff I need to teach and the support I need with my colleagues and my planning time and all those things. So I just want to make sure that what is the process then for employees as they join our system and as they engage a new school year? Or how do they know that they know that they have that responsibility and policy, whatever the policy is, and making sure it's super clear? So we never have someone who, it says intentionally unknowingly, but what if, I just want to make sure people would be fair warned about their responsibilities or obligations and what could be their consequences.
Sure. And I would say it's a great question and Dr. Killian can jump in, even Dr. Stewart, because one thing we have talked about in, and we were, I was actually going to try and get a draft out tomorrow for Jose Munoz to look at and Dr. Stewart, is that should we do like a one-sheet Q and A, or not Q and A, but just in the employee handbook about all the new change, you know, because there are a lot of things in SB 12 and some in HB 3T, but there's several where there are explicit consents that are required that maybe we're, you know, we're not required previously or we're doing our consents a little bit differently. And so we are going to try and put that in the employee handbook if nothing else as a, you know, new and updated or a Q and A. But the practical answer to that is I think most employees, as you said, are probably not getting online and looking at policy online unless they're in their grad school class, right? But I think they are and they do look at the handbook. And so DH is also replicated in the employee handbook.
I think, that's fantastic, your idea of summarizing, especially at the beginning of the year. There's so much activity. It's such exhausting, like the cycle begins again. And so I do think for teachers, a quick, short way to see that. So we don't leave any teacher vulnerable or any staff member vulnerable for that. And if I was having my preference, I'd like to see that each policy had its own little line about reinforcement. Even if it's not a very long, you know, violations, that same paragraph could be slapped on almost any policy we produce here. But I just, I would prefer it just because it's more explicit and more clear. But that could be a preference and I'll defer to the superintendent on that. Even though the policy is the board's business, but I do feel like the more people are very clear of their expectations and what could happen for them, I think the better.
Okay, I just wanted to say thank you to the policy committee. I know that the policy committee also spent a great deal of time going through all these policy revisions. And I appreciate the work that was done by that committee to prepare these in time for our meeting tonight because it has been a lot. So thank you for going through that.
Yeah, the hard work actually was admin. They did the hardest work and I really appreciate the time and effort to rush it in to clarify the law and do our best to do our due diligence to make sure we're legal and compliance with that. So we really appreciate everyone involved in that. Thank you. And also the board members to read in this. A lot of information to go through and thank you for taking the time to do that. And I know a lot of it didn't come till late. But that was just because changes of those. So got any more questions? We'll keep moving on. Thanks again. 9D, the board consider approving the second amendment to the lease, site lease for T-Mobile West Tower LLC. 9E, the board consider authorizing the sale of land for Jack Road and Mound Road and Dunham Point Development. This item may be discussed in closed session. Board now proceed to discussion items portion of the agenda. 10A, the board will discuss forming a long-range planning committee to review and provide recommendations to board trustees related to the facilities, technology, and transportation needs of the district. Dr. Killian and Theresa Hall.
Thank you very much. Actually, I need to again do kudos to Theresa for all her hard work getting this PowerPoint together and also the plans because she has done, actually, I don't know if she had a summer. Did you have a summer? I don't think so. Between, between all the legislative changes and everything else, I mean, she's just done a remarkable job putting all this together. So I wanted to kind of start us off and then Theresa's going to jump into a little bit more of the details. So we're looking at launching a long-range planning committee. And we're going to do things a little bit different this year. And Theresa's got a wonderful design that she's come up with along with basically starting with the end in mind, where we need to be at a certain time for y'all to make decision points. And so I wanted to kind of share the purpose of the committee. First of all, we're asking the development of a long-range planning recommendation of the board of trustees. And there's a specific timeline we have to get to. One of the major things that you know is attendance boundaries. We've got to fully utilize our campuses. So for the good of our community, for the good in terms of using stakeholder money, our community money properly and efficiently, maximizing the use of our facilities. And then just looking at some of the challenges that are going on in our district, you know, we're now 92% built out. And I know I keep mentioning that, but that, with that comes a little bit of a change in terms of what we have to do as a school district. And one of the things that we have to continue to look at are some of our our high-cost items in our district, our HVAC, our sporting facilities, our roofs, all the replacement schedules that we have for bus fleets and things like that. So we actually asked Matt to put together with his operations folks kind of a review in-house of what we have in our district and what our needs might be going forward. So as you know, we're we're running out of the last bond that we did. And are there anything, is there anything in our community, in terms of our facilities that we need to make sure we maintain that are going to be coming due, you know? We've had a number of HVAC system issues that have gone on over the last two years. And obviously, that's a big concern for us because we want to maintain that comfort level and our equipment in our schools. So part of the charge of this long-range planning committee is going to be doing a look at everything in our district, the safety and security. Have we done everything we can to maintain our kids and our staff's safety? Anything else? And you see a kind of exhausted list, well, a general list there. But something that's a little bit different is also having this committee look at boundary changes. Because, and this is a little bit different because a lot of times when you look at long-range planning, you really just look at facility needs and those replacement costs and all that. But Theresa's come up with a good plan to use a committee to look at the bigger picture, the whole strategic plan about long-range planning and what we need to do in terms of that. And this is going to be a deep dive for our community too. So the folks that serve on this committee are going to have to be able to commit a lot of time because we're going to bring people up to speed on what our needs are, what our challenges is, whether a demographer is shown in terms of growth in some areas, maybe not growth in another area. So they're going to have to absorb all that information and then tell us what they think and what they think we should do. So that's kind of what the charge for this committee would be. And then again, obviously, since Theresa's been intimately involved in this piece, she would be the district co-chair from inside the district. But we would also have somebody from the community that we would like to help work on that process with us. And then we're thinking a committee of about 65 people with the board appointing at least two a piece. And then drawing from our recent leadership CFISD group would be one of the things that we would do. And obviously, looking at other community folks that have an interest that can commit the kind of time to learn everything and then come together to look at everything. So we'll have a number of presentations. We're going to share our demographic report. We're going to share where we geocode our kids to, where they're at, all that kind of stuff, our use of our facilities and then just what's going on in our district. So with that, I'll turn it over to Theresa and give you the clicker.
Okay, with the timeline, this is really just tentative. But as Dr. Killian pointed out, we really had to begin with the end in mind. That if we reach the point of a recommendation from the long-range planning committee to possibly consider a bond recommendation to the board, we have two options. We have May or we have November. And in order to meet a May deadline, we have to call for an election 72 days prior to the actual May election date. So that pushes this into February. So we kind of started with that end in mind as an option if that is the recommendation that comes from the committee. And again, I think this is going to be a very different process than we've followed in the past. But when we begin kicking off, we're going to have to start immediately. We're going to have to begin in September, really trying to convene the committee, lay out the purpose of the committee, what their charge is, the kind of commitment that we're asking them to make and explain kind of the details of what we're going to be asking them to look at. In order to be prepared for any potential boundary modifications, we need to have that recommendation to you no later than January because we use that then as we go into the registration process for all of our campuses for the fall. So we would need to know what that recommendation is. So we're going to spend a lot of time at the beginning with the committee looking in depth at some of the enrollment trends. We're going to invite PASA to come. I want them to actually kind of present their report, a summary of their report to the committee, talk through what they are seeing as the trends. It also, by October, will have a better sense of what our actual enrollment is looking like for '25, '26. Again, we have projections, but we have to wait and see what happens when kids show up. Those first six weeks of the school year are always, it just moves because there's just a lot of in and out and time for registrars and campus staff in order to get all of the students in the system correctly and then all of the withdrawals out. So it takes probably till about the beginning of October before we have good, clear numbers. So we'll be studying that and looking at it because this is going to be critical. And PASA also looking at what we're seeing because we're just in a unique situation. And I don't think you can say it enough about us being 92% built out because that's what's creating our challenge along with all those other factors that we talked about. So depending on what the recommendation is from the committee to you about potential boundary changes could impact what they want to recommend for future facility needs. Or it could extend the timeline for the need for those facilities, depending on what the recommendation is. Because again, boundary changes, as you all know, that is a difficult process. But I think when we do it all together, I think they get to see how it all connects in the long-term impact and what we're asking them to discuss. So we'll be doing that through the month of October. Again, I've kind of prepared Scott Tucker as well. We're going to have to really dig in, doing boundary changes with parents and community members. We're going to have to spend a lot of more education time because of understanding rescodes. Every little section's broken to a rescode. There's so many students in those rescodes and feeder patterns. If you move this little rescode, does it change their feeder pattern? So those are all a lot of factors that I think in the end will be very valuable in helping our community to better understand the challenges of an attendance boundary process. So our hope is then we'll start in that. And again, this is not in stone. This is all kind of really woven together. But at the same time, as I said, we'll be also looking at what the facility needs are, where PASA's projecting, you may potentially need a new campus or facility so that when you're looking at boundary changes, you're having to take that into consideration. We would bring an update to you. We've built into this process other than in October because we will not have done enough work to give you an update at the October board meeting because it's early. But we have built into the process that each month we'll come back to you and provide you with an update of the work of the committee. Definitely, I think Mr. Morgan has worked to bring in a consultant, True North, to also present and share information in their evaluation of our safety and security needs and provide that to the committee and then let them again go through and look at all of that information. We do that hopefully in November also. So then we come into December. Again, facility assessment needs, that also includes the asset protection of our existing facilities, as Dr. Killian said. That is probably a bigger part of this process than any new facility because it is such, such important thing that we are continuing to protect all of our current facilities, keep them up to standard, make sure that chillers and so that we're not in a crisis situation of having to try to get a chiller here and a replacement, replacements of roofs, replacement of other maintenance items. So we'll be looking at that with the committee, bringing you an update in December. Also looking into any technology, infrastructure, instructional technology needs, studying all of that that information with the committee. And then January comes around. We're hoping at the January meeting with the committee, the January 7th, we're able to start prioritizing some long-term needs. They've looked at all the different areas. They've looked at attendance boundaries. They've looked at new facilities potentially. They've looked at asset protection, technology, safety, security. And then we're going to have to start the process of trying to prioritize what is the consensus of the committee to bring forward a recommendation to you. First one being the changes in attendance boundaries because depending on whether or not you approve any kind of attendance of boundary recommendation we bring forward to you would impact possibly what new facilities would be included in their final recommendation. We would update you then and hopefully have a recommendation in January with that process. Then depending on the outcome again, like I said, of all of the attendance boundaries, then they I said, of all of the attendance boundaries, then they could really finalize the plan, look at what financial impact, if there is the desire to call for a bond election. And again, we're trying to set this up so that there's the option, depending on the outcome and the consensus of the committee, whether or not they feel a May election is a better one, if that's what they decide, or if a November. But it gives us a long-term, they can weigh the pros and cons. And they can look at the potential impact, whether or not that's the recommendation they want to make. And then hopefully, the final recommendation to you on Thursday, February 5th. Then with the ability, if there is a recommendation to call for an election, that would be at the Monday night meeting. That is the work session in February. So that's kind of how we've laid out the timeline, again, with the end in mind. It is, it's pretty intense. And it's, we've set it up to only meet for two hours. I don't think that you can really ask people. I know Julie has experienced this firsthand as a community chair of a bond committee program. And there, I think in the 2019 long-range planning, we did end up with a couple of extra meetings. But I'll let the committee kind of drive that. Because sometimes they just get so into a discussion or topic, there may be the option for us to kind of pull in some Zoom. But this is what we've laid out. Because I think the dates are critical as we go out and start asking for folks to be a part of this committee, that they understand the commitment that we're asking them to make, and they can immediately plug in for sure dates into their calendar. So with that, we'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Go ahead.
A couple of questions. Well thought out, fast process. I do have, first question is board involvement with the committee. I have a recent experience where we had a budget advisory committee, we had a committee meeting. And because of the rules, which we are very careful to follow as far as, you know, not having more than three people, I felt like I made a really bad decision about buses. I had to apologize to the community. And I'm feeling a little bit like it was information blindness. So I would like to know if we couldn't include, at least maybe the officers of the board, it would be three of us. And then much like the DEIC did calendar, we were just observers. We were there, you know, present, listening so we could hear the information the community is bringing back firsthand. So I'd make that request. And then also, I will mention this. There is, I've heard a lot, Karen, correct me if I'm wrong, the best figure I can get when I research is about $31,000 per student bond debt. And that's been really bothering me since we had PASA come and talk about the fact that we're in declining enrollment. So then I'm thinking of little kids sitting there, less kids, the same debt. That means $32,000, $33,000, $34,000 per head in our bond program. So to me, that's critical information. And I've also heard a lot of community members asking for like a forensic audit, maybe not the right term. I saw the email you sent. So forensic makes it seem like there was misconduct or bad stuff happening. But a true audit of the finances to see how do we spend until the community really understands that we're not wasting money. We are very lean, where the budget difference is there, the low he is offered. Like, there's so much good, but there still lingers a question. So being able to, at the same time, answer that, I think is going to be important, even if that meant a firm or someone else that helps people say. I do have some questions. I'll send you, probably you and Karen, an email that you can figure out who that goes to. But there's areas where we spent over the five years, even though inflation only grew by 11%, and even though our student enrollment only grew by 1,000 students, we had some areas that went up like by 69% over the five-year period of spending. And so some areas went down, some areas stayed about the same. But I'll show you this analysis and see if maybe that kind of thing would answer the questions for the community because those are the kind of questions they have so that we can have an honest conversation about the needs. And so I think that if we don't do that, we might have, there's just going to be a lot more questions. And it's not going to let us get that in that timeline you have, which is quick. We need to make quick decisions. And so I just make those recommendations and see if that would be something that would help to have our process be thorough, complete, accepted, received, and successful for our needs.
Any other questions on the long-range planning committee?
I have a few questions. It shows here that you're looking at possibly having approximately 65 members. How many of that will be community business members? And how many of that will be staff, district staff or campus staff?
I don't have the exact number in front of me, but it was more parent and community members than district staff. When we had selection of district staff on the committee, we had a principal from each level. The committee was a little smaller in 14 and 19. I've expanded the number. Because when you get it too big, again, when you're working on complex topics like this and trying to reach consensus with much bigger than 65, it's difficult. But we also had classroom teachers, and then we also had students. We had three, I think, high school students, or two or three?
No, we had four.
Okay, I couldn't remember the exact number. But when I have district staff, obviously, all of the DST, we ask to be present just to answer any questions, but they are not members of the committee. So it's really very much community and parent heavy.
Thank you. Also, with the advent of possible boundary changes and so forth, how are you going to determine what parents will be a member of this committee if they're going to be impacted by boundary changes? How will that be handled?
That's a great question. So this committee's not going to be selected based on attendance, potential attendance boundary changes. Because built into our process, and I think this will be your first boundary process, Christine, so I'm glad you asked this question, we will still continue. When we bring maybe the first plan or idea that the committee develops, we'll bring that to you at that Thursday, November 6th meeting. At that particular meeting, we will then open up the opportunity for every single parent in the district to give us input. And we collect all of that. And so then we take all of that input and we'll bring it back to the committee, and we also share that with you each Friday. And so I think the other trustees can tell you that have been a part of this process, definitely in the last boundary process, we made modifications based on the input that was received. So everyone will have a voice and the opportunity, once we kind of lay out a plan or proposal.
Okay, great. I was just curious as to how that would be parsed out, not having been through the process before. I think that's all my questions right now. I might have some others, but I'll get in touch with you. Thank you.
Just a quick comment regarding the participation or even presence of board members at the long-range planning committee meetings. When I was part of the 2019 long-range planning committee, I asked the same question, like, shouldn't there be board members here to observe and listen and all that? And I actually reached out to the current board at that time. And they all said, no, no, that they really want the committee to do the work, bring the recommendations to the board for consideration. Like, it kind of helps maintain that line of governance. And it's important for the board to see the recommendation and to respect the work of the committee without being present and potentially influencing or, it's just, it was just from an area, just from a perspective of respect and honoring the work of the committee. And I said, okay. And it was right. It really was right. So that way, when we came as a committee to present to the board, they asked really good, thoughtful questions. And that was important, too, because if they had been present in the meetings, they may not have asked those questions. So just from an experience of having the same question six years ago.
That's interesting. I think also times have changed a bit. We had an election, people spoke up, and there's a lot of questions. Because we're in a declining enrollment situation, it's new, we haven't faced this before. And so I'm still going to say that I'm asserting the desire and the wish for us to have very respectful, the calendar committee. We were not there impacting anything. We didn't change. We were friendly. We were with the people. And they spoke, and the teachers got the calendar they wanted. And this is so important that I don't think it's okay not to be able to hear some of that conversation firsthand. So I'm just going to respectfully say it's a new day, a new time, a new level of situation we haven't faced. And so I still respectfully request that the officers be, and if the officers don't want that, then maybe they could have talked about that, but as far as who would be there. But I think at least having that presence to be able to answer those questions. Because like we saw before with the budget this year, we did not get that level of detail. There's no possible way to take that many meetings, two hours a day, and be able to bring that information to the board in a way that is, it's kind of information that can make us make the very best decision. And so I just respectfully assert again that request. Thank you.
I have one more question, just for clarity and understanding. When you're talking about business and community members, are these people going to be vendors, architects, construction companies, anything like that? Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, let me just say that on the speaker. No. Thank you, though.
Thank you. I'm glad we have that out there so the community knows.
Any other questions? Just my thoughts on that is milestones. Put those milestones in there and then maybe just give us project reports for sure on where we're at, if we're meeting those milestones and not meeting those milestones at a bare minimum. That's something I would think I'd want to say as a board member, how are we doing? How are we not accomplishing things? Whatever level of specificity y'all think is important for us to know. But the milestones, I think, are critical. So we hit those dates to make sure we get the appropriate time. Because I think once we do our thing, we'll have to go through Scott and other people to do their thing as well. So just making sure we have that. And secondly, you asked for input for us, for people. Make sure you give us clear time for that to happen. And then tell us those dates so we can make sure we get that to you appropriately. Because I know you have a very tight timeline on that as well. All right. Thank you very much for the presentation to everyone involved. 10B, the board received legal advice from general counsel regarding pending litigation that will be discussed in closed session. 10C, the board discussed a superintendent's evaluation that'll be done on Monday night in closed session.
I do have a question about that. 10C?
Closed session.
Yeah, it's a question about process. So is that good here? Marnie? Okay. Yeah, I'm just glad to see it. And finally, I'm very proud this board's work to do the strategic plan, really look at some critical data, have something very structured. And a lot of the strategic plan came out of ASVP committee. And at that time, Teresa, I think I gave you some of my favorite little papers, just in ways to tie strategic plan and superintendent evaluation together. And I hadn't seen, that was something when we had a team of eight that was given to officers. And as an officer, I've seen zero things about it so far. So we don't have it attached yet. I'm just trying to figure out how, a little bit more about how it was structured. And then I don't want to arrive Monday if that's when we're actually, the process, are we finalizing it Monday? I've heard zero communication about it. So if you could just tell me a little bit more, that would be great. And also, can you tell me if any board members were involved in designing, gave feedback to you or looked at it yet, other than what we'll do Monday night?
We talked about the superintendent evaluation, I think, what, at the January Governance Committee meeting? And we talked about the process that we had followed in the past. And then if there was a desire to make modifications or changes. I think the consensus at that point in time, because we have new trustees that have not had the opportunity to experience the superintendent evaluation process, there was the inability to say whether or not it was good or not. So the request was, can we continue with a similar process for the '25 or '24, '25 evaluation period? To your question about the strategic plan, it is the superintendent evaluation. So we have taken all of the goals and the target objectives or performance objectives that are outlined in the strategic plan. And we have a 133-page document where we've compiled all of that information that we've provided you over the course of the year on our performance towards all of those established targets and objectives. Then as far as the feedback, we are structuring the feedback a little bit. The only person that I've talked to directly about that is Scott, just in making certain, just as my, this is the way I'm structuring the feedback. But it was a very simple conversation about how I was doing that. And so just with Dr. Killian being new as well, asking him. So the only thing in the feedback is that we have a feedback form, instead of just an open-ended feedback form that you've had in the past, it is a little more structured. You're going to have each performance objective with the target and whether, you know, what the status of meeting that target is. Did we exceed the goal, the target? Did we meet the target? Did we not meet it, but we made progress or did not meet? And then there is a summary statement from Dr. Killian that really is pulled directly from the superintendent evaluation document, which is all of that data. So it provides you kind of a reader digest right here on this form so that you don't, if you want to go in and read all of the details, you've got that, kind of the appendix, if you will. And then there is a column then for each trustee to give feedback on each performance objective about what you see as the areas, are you happy with this? Or what do you, I can't remember the exact language. Did we meet the target? Are you happy with that performance? What do you see as areas of improvement in that particular target? So it is, it's really not different than what we've done in the past. Like I said, the only thing that I worked on modifying from what we did in the past was just this feedback form, which I think is a little more structured.
And I can give you some clarity, too. Just in terms of the whole document, it all only follows the work that the ASVP committee did in terms of the goals and guardrails. That's exactly what's in there and whether or not we met or did not meet that, so.
It sounds like it's making progress. I definitely was not, I did not feel like the prior Superintendent Henry's evaluation was so global and it was so open-ended. It didn't have a rubric or a number really that came up. It didn't come up to a total. I didn't even participate the second year because I could give him that feedback in his office. And it wasn't really an appraisal, in my opinion. So I love to hear, I think we set fair but very robust goals. And I've respected from day one that you'd like bring it. These were not easy goals to accomplish. And you said, yeah, we can do that. That's the work of the system, and this board voted for those. So do you total it anywhere? Is there like a score or a rubric score where you can then say, next year, like bonus for the superintendent because he makes beyond growth or?
No, we did not. Because again, I think that was the, when we had the discussion in the Governance Committee, because the prior boards, you know, I regret that you didn't like the prior process. But that was a process that they wanted and they had created. And so just like this, we've taken the strategic plan. And that is the formative evaluation that we've been providing you throughout the course of the year on all of those target and performance objectives. And this is the summative of it. This is just pulling it all together. And really, there's no new information. And we've been hearing your feedback over the course of the year. And so as Dr. Killian said, it is, it's pretty black and white. It's very focused on the strategic plan, which I think is a great thing.
Well, I want to just tell you, I think you're one of the most amazing professionals I've ever worked with anywhere, been around. You just are so incredibly productive and you get so much done and you do it with such high quality. So I just want to say that publicly. I would also like to say that I do believe that should have been discussion with the officers. We haven't had officers' meetings to discuss such a thing. That is where, when we had Team of Eight meeting, and that's not to you, that's to my colleagues maybe, when we did Team of Eight, we were given advice by the gentleman who came to train us. And he said that that's, the work shouldn't be in ASVP, it shouldn't be a committee, it should be in officers. So thank you for doing our work for us. We appreciate that. And I definitely, as long as Monday's just a look and see, I mean, because I think that our superintendent deserves the chance to get really good feedback. And I do super appreciate the work because we have seen data. And it's been very important, and it's been very comforting, and it's been very strategic in how we can set budgets and make the goals and be able to, you know, ask the questions of Dr. Gory and all of the team. But really, just jumping on and doing things, Dr. Gillian leading the way to make those improvements live. And so anyway, so at this point, Monday, will you be able to send it ahead of time a little bit?
You're not going to make any decisions Monday. You're just going to get the document. So then you'll have all that time until the next meeting.
Perfect. Okay, thank you. That's perfect. I appreciate that. Because it is very important that we give you, we honor the work that's being done. We honor the incredible growth. We had such graduation, Dr. Gory's like, did you see? I mean, we had a campus that was a nail-biter. And it was so like, wow. I mean, it was like a celebration. That campus principal took on a crazy hard job with a lot of pressure. And that was a lot of boldness. And she had incredible support. In my campus visit, I was assigned out there. And I got to see what the team looked like, who was there. Everyone was there to get that job done. And it was like, yes. Well, that kind of thing needs proper reflection, proper respect, and proper opportunity to celebrate. But not just celebrate, to really put a number to it so that we can see the advances that we're making. So I appreciate it. Thank you. I can't wait to see it. I'm excited.
Thank you. I would just caution that when we have an agenda item that's supposed to be discussed in closed session, that we maintain that. And that if, that we are careful about talking about things that have been discussed in closed session and open, including our Team of Eight training with a consultant. I move that we go to closed session now, please.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
All the...
All right, we're now in closed session. Thank you very much for attending this evening. And thank you for those who are watching online from home. from home. Thank you very much.